Traffic only measures. Could be part of the design standard.
We can pass that along to Brian and Nestor.
We we should just do that, just put it in the design standards that at intersections you can have, you know, you have the on-street parking and you have the bolt that comes out. That slows traffic down by four or five miles an hour automatically. Or build the road so it's got a chicane. We've never done that in the city, have we? Are we ready?
For ten? It's where the road.
Curbs come, oh yeah, where the road goes does one of these.
Yeah, it it it's not a straight road, it's got a bandwidth.
All right, that's, I think we're recording, so let's go ahead and call this the order, this is the committee, the whole meeting. Uh, what day is this still? March twenty seven? One, two, three, four, five, six, they have six councilor's presidents.
Yep, I'm online.
So the first item on this is executive branch committees, this is title two rewrite. Uh, we had a committee in the hall on this already, we just want to make sure that what has uh been rewritten basically says what we wanted it to say, so.
Yeah, so uh you first discussed the title to rewrite at work session November eighth of twenty-three, and then it was last discussed February twenty-first. Council gave us direction to simplify this, cut a lot of stuff out and ask that it come back to a committee of hold before it comes to uh action. So the packet and the council staff report had some of the changes, the scope and purpose was revisited, the appointment of committee members deleted. Definitions revised, simplified, the appointment of uh committee members was revised, and the terms were restated and clarified. Qualification or residency requirements revised and compressed. Uh, it's it's much shorter, in essence, what happens is on executive branch committees like Western Stampede Sustainability. The committees are created and dissolved by executive order by the mayor's office, uh. The terms are defined in the executive order by the mayor's office. Uh, the number of members and the purpose is defined by executive order in the mayor's office. And just simplifies it, the one uh change is that there are terms on the statutory committee. Which is Board of Adjustments, Planning Commission, and where's Josh? Board of Zineels, Board of Appeals, and those are three-year terms uh at a max of six years, so they can serve a few terms. Uh, the council had expressed a desire that uh there are a lot of people that would like to serve in the city and this provides an opportunity on the statutory committees. Statutory committees would still be subject to advice and consent, which is state law. The executive branch committees, Western Stampede, all of those, Parks and Open Space, Sister City, whatever committees the mayor wants to make. None of those members would come to the council for advice and consent. And that is what we have, so all we're looking for tonight is consensus from the council, what's in the packet? And bring it back to a city council meeting for action.
I just have one thing. Um, it's on line four thirty-nine, but it really starts on four thirty-six, I'm looking at the red line. It's individuals and entities, mayor requests both monetary and non-monetary city assistance, and then it goes down to the application process. Or requirements for receiving assistance to the council office director, but don't we want it to have director or designate?
I thought you, the last time we did this, it just said to the council office.
Yeah, something, but not the director, but either council office or strokes and some.
Well, we, you know, we had some discussion on it as to who it should go to. Because it was just vague a- as to whether it would go to the office itself, or whether we wanted Alan or or I guess he's designated to be the point person on receiving those, so.
Because it says any questions about the application process, does it really have to be Alan? I think if the Alan's not there, someone else can help them.
I think it's implied, isn't it? Like, if it says council office director and some, and they go and Alan's not there, so they ask Warren, and Warren says, yes, do this, no do that. If there's anything wrong with that word, it's Alan ultimately responsible.
It's an easy shot, like, we can, we can just take out the word director and then.
It's easy, it also in one six twelve, I think it is, it it does allow me to delegate any of the responsibilities.
Of anything, right?
So, but we can, we can delete director, just leave it as council office.
General and some of these better.
We're not gonna lose any sleep over that, that's for sure, so.
I have, I have. Two issues. Um, I'm looking at the savings clause, I don't remember the number.
Is this in the? The savings clause is twenty-three, three eighty-four, and once we know what the council wants to do, we can stick a date in there, that will.
But I don't want to just stick a date in it, so here's, here's where I'm coming from. We, we shouldn't be, if the terms are set for three years, we need to start setting the What we can't say is everybody gets their five-year term and then we start playing with this. We probably ought to look and say which terms are up. So that's where I'm going with this, is it's gotta be, the savings clause has gotta be, okay. Who's coming close to their three-year term, they get reappointed, they get appointed again, and so forth with the five mem.
I can, I can help you on that, so. Somebody, it might have been Julie, got me a spreadsheet with when terms are expiring. And and they were staggered, I I can get it o- over to you if if you'd like, there's, send it to you. It it was, there's a great insistency with with how things are gonna.
They just don't want to have all of them have five-year terms and say you're grandfathering everybody into a five.
I, I think, I think we're good with where things are at, there's some that are coming up on the end of their terms pretty soon. Um, there's s- some that just started.
Okay.
Um, the, the beginning.
Councilmember Green, if, if I can interject, when we had this discussion uh with Mr. Boyce. Um, the discussion was the, the members of the Board of Adjustments that are they were adopted by resolution at five years, so when we discussed it, the idea was those that are already appointed with a resolution that are five years would stay at five years, the new ones that would come on would be at three years.
We can try, we can change that and say they only get three-year terms, so that it starts to become consistent. And I think that's a better practice.
I actually like it the way it's written here, because if I was appointed to something and I thought it was gonna be for five years, I'd, I would like to serve my five years.
But we're changing it to a three-year term, so why would we grandfather somebody to a five-year term?
Because they were appointed to a five. And they, those are pointed later.
How does confusing, does that make it for everybody to track and do everything to have five-year terms and three-year terms and? No, they all should be, it should be consistent with.
We've got that spreadsheet that that Julie keeps. Um, that keeps it pretty clear, and then I, I'm actually the attorney that's been assigned to the, the Board of Adjustment specifically, so one of my responsibilities is making sure that when we get closer to the end of those terms, that we notify the, the board member, that we notify the mayor. That we notify that, that side of things to keep things straight.
What Julie does is this effect. I, I mean. The five-year only affects the Board of Adjustments, there was a disconnect between the, the code that said all, all committees are served three years, but there was a carve-out for Board of Adjustment for five. The direction we understood from the council is, it's all, all the statutory is three years. But we have these, these members that are serving that have been appointed and it, and.
For five years.
Advice and consent for five years, so when Mr. Boyce and I drafted this, the discussion that we had was to keep those that are already serving for five years, and when they rotate out, the new person coming in would be three years.
No, we're just, we're just really talking about one board and that's about it.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so let's not put too much time into this.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the other one that I, that I have problem with is, and I thought we decided that the Board of Appeals qualifications, we're gonna get pulled out of ten out of Title Ten and put here, so that all of the board qualifications are consistent. And not have, oh, we gotta look here for a board, for their terms, and we gotta look here for their terms and w- we need to move that Board of Appeals terms out, I think it's ten-six, we need to move it out of ten-six and move it over here and just, and make it consistent with all the others. Um, that, so, I don't know. The, that's the way we keep, we, we keep things from having, that's why we have multiple problems with ordinances is we put, we put something in one ordinance and we forget that there's another part that affects it, and they're not consistent, so.
So, uh, one of, one of the things, it, and this is my, my, my ask from, from these types of meetings. Uh, fortunately, they're recorded, I, I go back and listen to them like three or four times to try and draw on like a consensus of what the body of the council wants.
We do a terrible job of telling you what we want.
I, I won't, I won't buy.
I, I know, Alan and I kept about this all the time.
Then, what, what I would say is, if, if, if the council would like that those sections put into Title Two, we can do that, I think one of, one of the concerns that I had is that it does fit in Chapter Ten, uh, I mean, well, does of, of the surrounding provisions.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be contrary to you. The, the, the Planning Commission's got their terms in Title Two, and all their powers and duties are in Title Thirteen. Board of Adjustments got their powers and do, their, their terms and everything in Title Two. And they're, all of their powers and duties are in Title Thirteen, so why not just, ju- just do this? And, and, and so, which leads to my last discussion, I noticed that we have the terms that, the terms for the statutory, you know, Board of Adjustment terms are this many terms. The Planning Commission, each one, but we talk about the exception and something up, else up above. Can't we consolidate that and just say, here's the term, and here's the words? And, 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 but my last question is, did we really decide on the Planning Commission saying two terms or six years which is ever greater? Because if you have two to, two terms that went five years, you can still get reappointed, and you're not at six years, but your term doesn't.
Planning Commission is three years, it's only Board of Appeals is five.
N- no, go back and look at the number of terms that you can serve, and the wording is two terms or six years which is ever greater. So you can serve two terms or six years, is that what we want? Is two terms or six years which is ever greater, or is it two terms and six years which is ever smaller, because then you can serve two terms. And then you get reappointed to the third term, and that would be more consistent with the way we're doing it now. Is that you would serve a partial term if you got appointed, plus a full term, and then if you get reappointed, you invoke the inception requirement. But if you do two, you two terms or six years which is ever greater, that creates some con, that creates some some, some infusion, because, oh, I serve two terms, but I've only served five years. I can serve six, but my term goes greater than six, you see where I'm going? And so, I, I, I would rather see that, that's, that's a two terms or six years which is ever shorter. And then they can get subject to a third year because that, a third term, because that's the way we're doing it now.
So we're just saying the third appointment always needs to give.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly right. That's what I'm saying, is if we said two terms or six years, it's.
But if we put a year restriction on it in their midterm, then they would terminate the middle of that.
But you can't terminate in a term because they have to be staggered. That, if, 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 if what you're saying was, we serve three, but, but because people serve staggered terms, so we have continuity, we can't do that. We can't say, oh, you get appointed for a one-year term, so you can serve out your six. Because we, we have the definitive staggered terms. So that, that's why I'd rather see that wording saying which is ever shorter. But, or just two terms. And, and then if they, then if the mayor wants to appoint the third term, then he invokes the, he invokes the exception requirement.
And I don't, I don't believe we have an exception requirement, I think the max is six years.
No, you have an exception requirement, there's a waiver requirement in there.
We, we did include the waiver, the city council can waive the term limit for any statutory committee member bypassing a reappointment resolution.
Yeah, that specifically says we're waiving that.
Right, right, yeah. Cause we, so, we discussed that one, so.
So I, you know, I would just as soon strike out the six years and just say you have two terms. And because there's a waiver requirement, if we didn't have the waiver requirement, then I'd say, okay, then we can deal with this.
You make your point, cause the term doesn't have to be so many years, because that's only gonna be three years anyway, so if it's a partial term, it's still a term.
I think you would have to define that then, you just put that definition in there that, you know, a term is any length of service regardless of how long, you know, whether it's filling an, an, an expired term or somebody else, or whatever, however you word that, right? You say a term is a term is a term. But we can say a term is not. Whether you were appointed in November, before the end of the year. See, I would, I would also go, I would also go to the fact to say that a term is not considered anything less than a year. Because you might have just one of those short-duration appointments for four or five months, and if you said you had, you defined a term is not something, then you, you'd have the two terms and it excludes some of that short.
And now you're to that presidential thing, right? If you get the last two years of a term, then it doesn't count as a term, but if you get the last two years.
The, the language, just to be clear, the language says, for Planning Commission specifically. Planning Commission members may serve a maximum of two full consecutive terms or six years in office, whichever is longer, so. If you are appointed halfway, if you are appointed to fill in halfway between uh, a term for somebody, it's a year and a half that you're filling in. Then you're reappointed for one full term, reappointed for another full period, that's seven and a half years, but it's only two full terms.
But that's a change in our policy, and my question is, do we want to do that?
Sure, whatever you guys want.
Well, if they're not reappointed, does that mean they're terminal?
I'm, you know, I think our main thing was, we were just saying the third term, once you got to the third term, then it was, had to be up for you know, kind of rehire, and.
I mean, that was what we were saying, it didn't matter the years or number of terms, it was just your third term is when you have to go back into the hiring pool, so to speak.
But if you have the word two full terms in there. In theory, the way it's worded right now, if somebody resigned it three months, four months into their term, we have a planning commissioner that serves two years, eight months. Plus three, plus three, and it doesn't require an exception from the council, so they're serving eight-plus years on the Planning Commission. And I don't like that. It can be.
But remember, Planning Commission is, is a statutory.
Um, yeah.
And, and so they, they come for advice and consent.
Right.
Council could make that decision on reappointment on case-by-case basis.
Well, yeah, I think there's already checking the code. And I, I just, it's a substantial change from the way that we're doing policy now. And I thought that the idea from this council was that we were looking for more citizen participation instead of having somebody serve ten damn years on the, 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 the Planning Commission.
Now you put it to ten, there's no way it ever did. If we, if we just take two terms, that was, that was the whole idea, I remember we talked about, two terms, and then you have to go back into the hiring pool. If we just put it at that, and maybe it's not even full terms, two terms, if you came in, you had it a month, and then you got another three years. If you proved yourself, you can get your job.
And see, I agree with that.
And that, that to me is what I thought, we just said, make it just a simple thing of that, whatever.
Just make it two turn.
Two terms.
I will. Say two terms of any length. Just to clarify, so that we don't get into a discussion about what's a term later, I think it's, we either have to say full or any length.
Yeah, two, two terms of any length. And then. That you're going to the third, that just makes this so simple, we don't have to put years, we don't have to put shorter than, longer than.
Two terms, two terms, two terms.
See, I'm not losing any sleep over this either. Council has a check and balance on this every.
I agree with you, that's, I just want to make it simple.
So it sounds like I've got consensus.
I'd like to hear off. It's, it's his, it's his planning commission.
No, it's our planning commission, that's. Right, he appoints them, but the legislature wants.
We still want to hear what he says, regardless. Go ahead, Bear.
I like having the provision that, that there's someone who's doing the next install.
Yeah, you're not having to kick him out. Other people get a chance to apply. That's all we're saying. Americans say, I love all of these people, but I still like this guy better. That's, that's any, any person who hires anyone has that ability.
Yeah. And you can tell them, here, if there's someone on there we don't like, and some of us have.
And you say, no, if you replace them anyway, we say, no. We've never done it.
Anyway, I, I think, I think just a solid, two terms of any length. Clears that up and we're good.
What about the, what about the Board of Appeals moving that section from ten to two? What, it's just, it's one section in Title Ten that talks about terms and term limits and all those, and the pay. Cause it talks about specifically in Title Ten, that they get paid twenty-five dollars. And based on discussions in the last council meeting, what we want to do is say it's based on the consolidated fee schedule. So if, if we move title, if we move that section of Title Ten over, we can, we can put it, make it consistent with the other statutory boards. And make the penny consistent with all the others, instead of having the twenty-five dollar uh, fee that they get in the, that's listed by ordinance, we can modify that in the fee schedule.
Are you talking ten-three-three, which I have up on the screen?
Yes.
No, it's not just ten-three-three.
Yeah, no, it's actually only ten-three, it's actually only ten-three-three. Board comp, board composition and filing a vac, filling a vacancy.
So we don't put the purpose of the board in that, or the content of it less?
Yeah, because that's, because the, 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 the Planning Commission's got that stuff in Title Thirteen now. And so does the, and so does the Board of Adjustment got those kind of things in Title Thirteen, it's just the filling of the I'm just talking about the composition and the filling of the ve, the board. It should be consistent with all the other statutory boards the mayor's got, put it in one section and make it easy.
Is there consensus on that, moving ten-three-three to Title Two? Any other comments?
On, 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 listen, this is the best committee of the whole meeting ever. I mean, I know I'm new, but since November, this is the best one.
Which are already rolling, I, I will, I will put that in. We're, we're working on.
This helps itself, so, um, no, no, that's a good question. Um, this one does say twenty-five dollars per diem for the, the uh Board of Building Appeals, do you want that dollar amount codified, or do you want it like everything else in the salary schedule?
Put it in the.
Refer to the fee schedule.
Fee schedule.
Yeah, salary.
And we're gonna amend, we're gonna amend those things like.
I, as a general rule, I think it's better to put anything with dollars in the budget and fee schedule where it gets reviewed annually and adjusted with inflation and everything.
Same, this one doesn't happen.
The last time that that was modified with the twenty-five dollars is probably two thousand, uh, probably two thousand nineteen or two thousand and one. Because the twenty-twenty-one version was for the ma, was the modified for the new form of government. And we didn't change the twenty-five dollars then, so that number's way out of date.
Okay, so, just to make sure we are all on the same page, I have consensus for Patrick, you'll have to help me, um, two terms of any length. Um, moving ten-three-three to Title Two. And removing twenty-five dollars from here and putting it in the salary schedule. I mean, did I miss something?
And then you're gonna clarify the savings clause.
Then I'm gonna clarify the savings clause. Hey, so is there a consensus to bring it back to the city council?
I think we're clear enough to come to the meeting for.
So, agreed, okay, so we'll do that, it'll come up, uh, probably in a month, six weeks or so, when we get it done. All right. Um, next. Next up is Title One. Title One, Chapter Eight, this has come to the committee of the whole two times, uh, was discussed on, um January tenth, and then came back on February twenty-first with the changes of the understanding we received from a consensus of the council is to delete most of it, allow the mayor to define the departments, uh, similar to what Salt Lake City had done, so. And just, uh, pages one through four deleted, the administrative organization introduction was writ, most lines on page five and six deleted. Legal department, responsibility summarized, uh, pages seven and nine deleted, fire department responsibility summarized. And on and on, a lot of, a lot of deletions if you looked at it. Uh, public utilities has been added, responsibility summarized, special functions, uh, with grammatical adjustments and omissions corrected. And the creation of special departments, which you have defined in other sections of code, and many lines on page nineteen and twenty deleted. The council asks that we make those changes and bring it back to a committee of the whole to get a consensus on this, and our hope tonight is that, uh, if there's any changes that you see tonight, if any. Um, that we would have consensus to what those changes would be and bring it back to a city council meeting for adoption.
Nope. I have three things. And I'll work with you top line on that. There's, no, uh, cause I think there was some line number, and no, um, here's, here's the couple of, here's my three things, I think we're using the word shall too much. Um, I, just, just based on, there's a lot that we can just change to present tense. Um, for, a- and there's, there's a couple even in the committees that we need to talk about going to present tense instead of future tense, like the city will use the, um um, will use the, the, the State Ethics Committee, well, if we're gonna use it, when are we gonna start? Um, it really should be present tense, the city, and so, and there's a couple of future tense things here. Um, there are some parallel issues, for example, fire department is listed out great with, uh, the duties and numbers, one through whatever it is, eight or nine. The police department is mex, is mixed up in one paragraph. So what I would suggest as a format is that we get the, the numbering and the parallelism. And let's make sure that everything's parallel. And that when the department, and there's a couple of grammatical errors and a couple of things we can do to make the lists a little bit more parallel, so that it doesn't say must do something, and then it's got some really weird wording that not, you know, it there's a couple of them that are like that, so it's just, it's just some grammatical cleanup and I'll get with, Patrick, are you doing that one?
Yeah.
I'll get with you and we'll, we can talk about some of the simple cleanup. I, I don't, I don't want to change, I'm not gonna change the wording, we just need to clean the parallelism that's here.
I just need to make sure that we have consensus of what's being changed, cause if, if you're changing things and the rest of it.
What's that?
It's gotta come back for voting.
Well, I understand, but I, I'm just, I, I need to make sure that there's consensus.
I didn't say anything that I'm opposed to, I'm good with checking grammar and good to having it make it be more clear. Yeah.
Do I have like four of you that are?
I, I don't think anybody's supposed to.
Yeah, so.
Well, but he needs four, so.
Okay.
Um. Okay, who else, Kellie?
So on red line, five eighty-four. It's, it used to say that these positions could be, and now it's saying are hereby created. List of special functions, positions, the following special functions and positions are hereby created.
You don't need for hereby.
I don't know why, why we changed it to are instead of can, um, or may.
I, I like what you're saying, cause you're right, Kellie, I think that should be a may or could, could be your may, not a force of creation.
Oh, so here's a carbon, carbon, and, and this is where I'm gonna say, I, I don't mind the word, uh, is, is created.
Are hereby created.
Well, what we're doing is, we're, so what we're doing is, we're creating those special functions. And then saying, we've created those, and the mayor can, the mayor can, the mayor and the city administrator can put them wherever the heck they want.
He, as long as it doesn't require the special function, for example, um like, like performing arts, right? It doesn't require us to have a performing arts division. You created it, and now budgetarily and with the mayor, we can exercise it and implement it, but we don't have to just because it's created in code, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I.
As long as it doesn't require the.
It doesn't require the funding of the code and it doesn't require us to man it, and we just my, my thought was, we've created those, because that's what we were talking about, right, before, was, uh, it was, was uh, what, what, what authority does the mayor have to create departments? That was the big discussion we had. And so.
We move them around.
And, and so what we're saying is, we've already created those departments, the mayor can use them if he wants and move them around wherever he wants. That's, that's where I'm. And move them around wherever he wants. That's, that's where I'm seeing this go as opposed to. Because what we. We don't want to say they may be created because the ma, is the ma. We're the ones that create it. We're creating those and allowing him to execute those departments if he wants. That's where I see this.
And if they're funded.
And if they're funded.
Okay. Uh, I'm still not comfortable.
The, the following special functions and positions are created. And, and remove hereby and, and simplify that language. We can. Because that's, I mean, that's essentially what the council is doing is creating and departments, creating divisions. And, and these special functions fall under that.
Well, yeah, and are they? Are they departments or aren't they?
Well, they're bureaus. I, I think what the state code says is departments, divisions and bureaus, whatever those.
Okay, because we have, it's just not consistent here in the, in the, in section one, five eighty-four, five eighty-five. It's a list of special functions, positions and departments. And then it says, here's the special functions and positions. Doesn't say anything about departments after that. So, you know, we're creating departments or we aren't creating departments. If we're not creating departments, let's take out departments from the title. Should I, we are, let's put it in the.
Would the council be okay if I included something like divisions instead of departments? Because these are smaller groups, divisions probably.
Maybe use the word division or bureau or some, something like that, some ad state statute.
Or just leave it at functions. That's a special function.
Divisions, divisions does echo then what the state statute says that the, that the council can create. So it, it would kind of resonate with.
Kailene, would you prefer to have a sentence that says after it's created, they don't have to be?
I would like something that says that he's allowed, they're allowed to use them, but not have to, because when I read this. It's like, okay, you have to have all these.
I, I, I could definitely see a council member coming up someday in the future and going, we created a total for a department.
Yeah.
Well, you know, be a perfect example in that list. That says that we created it. We, we had a long discussion about this a meeting ago about a parking enforcement bureau and guess what's in the list? Parking enforcement. So it's kind of funny that it's already there for the mayor. The, because we've changed it, we changed it to a civil, now he can use that.
But, but can I address Councilmember White Lux's concern? Um, down in subsection two, when it discusses placement of special functions, positions. And I'll, I'll, I'll use divisions and stuff in there as well. But it, it allows for those placement of those special functions to be moved around and assigned. But also there is, um, a mention of something when it's not presently on, right?
It's true.
So, um, so I, I think that, that there's mention in there of. These items, if the council doesn't want them active like performing arts, is, is Corbin mentioned. It's not funded, it's listed, it might be funded in the future. We don't want to have to come back and do a full. Code revision to add it in as another line. If the council does decide to fund it at some future point. It, it might be easier just to leave that in there and, and then not fund it as, as part of your budgetary process.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like.
If there's a way to clean that wording up a little bit, that, that.
Or, yeah, I can, I can work on that.
Uh, it's, it's there though. It's, it's not currently funded. The council has to fund it before you can do it. So the mayor can't just move money out of one thing and put it in one of his.
Technically, the mayor can do that.
But it says right here, you can't.
Uh, I also want to know why some were taken out, like why were cemeteries, parks and trails and urban forestry struck?
I can comment to that.
Cause some of them, it just seems weird to me.
Cemetery, cemeteries, parks, trails and urban forestry will all always group together. And so we've grouped those together under, uh, public services and they'll always fall under public services, whereas. The ones that are listed here as special functions are division, generally they are divisions of departments, which theoretically. Could be moved from one department to another's department's responsibility.
So.
But those three that were stricken are listed above in the duties of a public service.
Can I play devil's advocate and I?
Oh, right, there are mine by seventy-eight.
And I think I agree with Kailene. Councilmember White Lux, we're in a meeting. Um. I would like to leave. Maybe not cemetery. But I would likely, uh, parks and recreation may be one that we want to leave separate. Because what happens if the city decides Salt Lake County's not doing good enough? Um, and we decide we want to do what Draper and Murray and Salt Lake City do. And have a Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I would like to leave that function a little bit more open. I, I thought the same thing. And since you mentioned it, I'll jump on it, but. I would like to e- either leave parks or change the word parks, the parks and recreation. And just have that there already established that if. The mayor decides he wants to have a rec, Parks and Recreation Department like other cities. And he can come to us and we can fund it and he can start to establish. Do you see where I'm going with that?
Can you do that without me?
Can I ask any question on that?
Like you could add it to this, you could add, because we already do parks, we maintain parks. You're saying, are you saying add recreation to this list of special functions? So it's created and.
Sure.
If you want to fund it, you, it's funded.
I would be okay with that too.
But what if? So it's not in there right now. So there's no code to say what you're saying, but in essence, the mayor still could come and ask us for that.
Well, he could.
So we don't really, I mean, adding it's not going to change how things are today.
It would, it would, um. Putting it in the code without funding it, if you decide to fund it in the future, it wouldn't require a code amendment. And it would be operating on without changes to the code.
And the, the other thing is you may want to just rename sometimes because like Ashley and Sherry. They do a lot of what other cities recreation departments do, right? We call it events. So I just think somewhere along the line in the code, Parks and Rec, Recreation or something, I, I'd just like to see that in there. For some flexibility for if we decide we want to change some things.
I think recreation would be a good add to that list of, of created special functions that might be funded in the future.
Well, I don't, I don't think necessarily the point of this section, I mean, to think of all the things the city may someday do.
No, but.
And stick it in there so we don't have to amend the code if the city decides to someday do that.
But that, that, that one's such a common.
That one's an obvious one, then, and we'll agree on that, that's, that's fine, but I. I just think that knowing that, hey, if we need to amend code in the future to create this. It's one line and hopefully it doesn't.
We can change codes to.
But we're not allowed to change code. Oh, wait, yes, sir.
My question is simply. Where you have a parks department, what's the difference? Just need a, a little bit of base to build on. I'm not sure I understand. Because, because some depart, some cities have parks and recre. Come on, you've never watched NBC with Parks and Recreation?
Seen like one episode.
But I think, but Parks and Recreation in a lot of cities are the actual parks. And then, and parks and in some certain cir- circumstances, facilities. And then they run the leagues. That Salt, you know, Salt Lake County runs them all in the city right now, but the question is. And, and Draper, all the events people fall in the Parks and Recreation Department. So if there was a change, it, it would, you could move those around.
So in Parks and Recreation be a department or would that be a special division or would we put parks under public services? And recreation as a division that may be put under parks.
I like, or can we just call it Parks and Recreation when that comes up or let it later date?
So now, right now, I, I, I've kind of just squeezed it in at the end of our special functions as recreation. So that it's a special function, division that you can assign or the mayor can assign. As funds are made available, as funding is made available. Sounds like it would be public services anyways. But, but it can be assigned as it's funded and as it comes out.
And then to address Kailene's point, we leave parks, cemeteries and recre, park cemeteries and urban forestry. Under public services. Up on line five seventy-one.
And it starts on recreation, they never actually handled recreation stuff. They only handled parts stuff.
I just remember a big hole being involved.
So the other thing I had is six oh one, and I just want to see if there are three other people that are willing to say strike performing arts. I just don't know why we want to give the authority to have a performing arts. When we just a few years ago said, you have to be out of the city. We want you to get your own five oh one, three C. So for me, I would like to strike that because I don't, I don't want mayor coming and asking me to basically create. A division that will kind of compete with an organization that. Well, that we kind of pushed out, right?
What, what, change the word performing?
Just, just to say that, you know, I, I don't disagree with you. But.
Look, I want us three more people to say yes or no.
Right, just to, just to be the devil's advocate here. West Valley actually has part of their city government that is official performing arts. And then they work with the five O C three and they work very closely together and do a lot of city things. Is that, do we want to allow that flexibility or do we strike that? We just say the mayor can assign this, that to somebody in advance if they wanted to do it.
Future mayor wanted to do something like that, they could certainly bring it.
I, I would say just real quick, since Kenny wanted to hear from me, I need to make sure I speak. That might come on the plan with this new performing arts center. Are we going to hand that over to our five oh one, C three? Are we going to be handling, and if we're going to be handling it, it very may well be that we have a performing arts. Group that runs that building and then, you know, allows you goes.
I thought it was a community.
Well, somebody still has to run it. It is a. But it's not performing sort of things you're supposed to go in there. You just take the performing arts. That's what I want with the record.
And you did fund a public arts program this year that we haven't had any progress on yet. Um, if we put public arts in there, that could encompass performing arts if it went and come from. And then you can also have somebody now in charge. We are removing your coordinator.
I would be okay changing it to public arts. I just, I, I just feel like, in my opinion, we push them out.
Yeah.
For financial reasons and I don't want to set something up.
Real quick, we didn't push them out. They, they had the decision because there was an issue with how things were getting paid. And they didn't want to come and ask for money every day.
It was a mutual decision.
Yeah, it wasn't the push out. But was there, is there four of you, at least four of you that agree with that?
We have more favor of saying public arts instead of performing arts.
Yeah, it's, it's public, I'll say. Strike it too. If, if, if the mayor wants to come back and put it back in.
Well, we do have public arts that is funded that we don't have.
Okay. I don't think striking it hurts. I agree with Kailene, but at the same time, mayor does come back, we can do something else, but I'm public arts.
Okay, sweet. Anything else on, uh, Title One? Title one, section.
Did I make one more comment? Uh, then, Mr. Chair?
One more?
Listen.
Use it wisely.
I, I, this is the best one. It, it won't show it on the red line version, but it's twenty pages long. And with all of the edits and cuts down to four. So, uh, I, I, you know.
Thanks for listening.
I, I, I would like a high five or something around the table.
So you, don't you tell you, every time I send you an edit, edits, I always include the statistics. How many words did I cut? How many sentences were got reduced and what the grade level is?
A magnum opus right here. I mean, this is sixteen pages axed, so.
Yeah.
I love it.
Thank you.
And people, you know, people in the legislature passing all these bills, a majority, not a majority, but a good chunk of them are cutting language instead of, you know.
Thank you.
Five hundred and ninety-one.
Yes, set a record. He rolled record of five seventy-five.
So make those changes that have been documented and bring it back to council meeting again. Okay.
On consent.
The last one is S H O, which was directed by the council. There's five changes in the documents on, I think, four, five, five pages. Um, this is the direction, uh, so if you look at the first page. Uh, the zoning map amendment to reboot, remove S H O's. Uh, application by a developer, um. As a planning commission recommendation, going back to city council. That's really small print.
I have a computer.
Kind of run in a meeting, so. Um, an applicant may not submit and the city shall not accept an application to change or remove existing S H O. And for, uh. See.
There was one that is.
Much bigger.
If, if a lot's already been sold.
Yeah, lots already been sold, they're not permitted to remove S H O, which is something that the council had asked.
We actually asked that.
I don't remember us asking that.
I think it was more that you had asked for a threshold at some point. It's too late.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
So that was just a placeholder. It could be that, it could be something else.
I don't personally like that threshold.
Draw a line.
Yeah, see, I, I, Kailene, I don't like that threshold. My threshold is. It's, it, I like the step that, that you did with the non-conforming and it can increase the non-conforming and it's. If a lot's already been sold, then it can be conforming in the new, new zone. I'm okay with that.
Because of the criteria.
Because of that, that, so I didn't want it to say, no, just because a lot's been sold, I don't want to change the overlay. You know where I'm going, Larry?
But, uh, no. I had to say the word perfect or friends, Parker Place, but.
Yeah, you can use Parker Place for an example.
Um, it was supposed to be a senior housing. You can say they sold two houses and those people bought under the. Uh, agreement, there would be a senior housing community and then. The overlay was lifted and now it's no longer a senior housing community. That, that's clearly what we were thinking.
I can see that rationale.
Uh, I think if that can be worked into the other criteria, then we don't necessarily need to go down the real estate route.
It doesn't have to be that line, it can be some other line. No, I, I get your point is, is that they, they bought reasonably relying on the fact that it's a senior housing. The two overlays that we've had. Removed are, you know, the Peterson one and this one. And the developer owned all the land at that point in the home. So maybe we can just clarify that to sell, you know, the. That, that, that they sold the, that they sold the lots as senior housing. Properties. And I think if you clarified that, at least for me, I'd be okay.
By an, and if they were bought by an end user or a, a resident or somebody who's reasonably expected to occupy. The lot, because if it's sold to another developer, I don't think that should necessarily trigger.
Yeah, it, it's gotta be, it's got it sold to an occupant that relied on the senior housing overlays.
The financing.
Yes.
Because, but I think it could, might be able to roll it into six B, where it says properties and structures. Within the existing overlay district will not be significantly negatively affected by the restriction or change of use.
Oh, yeah. I don't know that quite gets everybody, I mean, it does. Yeah, that's kind of a subjective bar. If you can make that a little more clear, maybe by going with the, you know, purchase by an occupant or whatever. I don't know the right legal way to say that, but Duncan does.
We can find that.
Yeah, Josh does.
Very much wanting to have this.
Pamela, are you still there? She's on the Zoom. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'm still here. I'm still here.
Was there anything on this one you wanted to mention in the due?
I think, I think it's already been mentioned.
All right, so there are just a couple other things that I'll just throw in here. We need, so that we can do this better, maybe review it again next time. We need line numbers and there's some, there's some really strange references to Utah code. Um, I know that we're trying to standardize the, um, the references, the Utah code. And, and so maybe we can, Alan can, and I, or we can talk about it. And then there are some references to our internal code that say, see this section, see this section. But it doesn't help anybody know what those are. And so I think we need to figure out how to. Incorporate the reference to the other sections of code. So that they can semi stand alone and not just say, see this section, because nobody knows what we're going to see there. Or, you know what I mean, Dr. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get some, some suggestions by variety that aren't gonna change the wording any, but. But I, I, there's a couple of things that I saw some language that I'll.
That is kind of weird to say, see this and then say, why?
Yeah. And, and then there were a couple of grammar errors and stuff. And when I go back through it again, I didn't have enough time to work on it all. I'll send you some stuff.
But substantially no other changes? And obvious, and then the biggest part of this was the process, right? We needed a process where it could come back to you as a council early. And we already had this process for every time it's a future land use map amendment that comes to the committee of the whole, so we're just using that same process, right? Any of these proposed removals. So, so apparently you're comfortable with that, right?
Yeah.
Yep. That's all we've got for the committee of the whole. This one, I presume you would like to come back to a committee of the whole for discussion?
Yeah, no problem, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't sleep a lot. What are you, you're twenty years old.
All, I live on my own, all without any of this stuff. I don't need any extra help. Um, so is everybody in agreement then on this last one? I didn't hear any.
I don't know if it fully accomplishes what Pamela and I had talked about.
Well, let's, let's get this next draft in and we'll see.
Yeah.
But I think we're, 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 we're at least in the same. Lot as the ball field.
Yeah, we're getting closer. I like the movement. I like the movement that we're doing on it.
There's, there's specific questions that, that can help us dial it in with Councilmember Whitelock.
I'll read it again. I know I read it.
All right, um, I'm not seeing any further discussion or, or, you know, item. Are we good? All right, I'll go ahead and say the agenda's complete, so we are adjourned. Thank you for, uh, for entertaining us with a little work session after the session.
Yes, we won't have one here.